All trustees are president accounted for. And we have one item on the agenda this evening, which is a presentation regarding how the village board decision making process can align with immediate and long term needs of the communities being served by the public works facility. UWM Master of Sustainable Peacebuilding graduate students. So I will hand this over to Rebecca to tee up for us and then the students will present.
Introductions really within the scope of the memo for tonight's agenda. So I'm going to turn it right over to UWM and the graduate students, which has been a really impressive team that I am fortunate we've had and experienced to work with so that they can start on the presentation.
Great, and I will encourage just in the memo, it gives the background, of course. And then with the presentation, please, you know, listen and then we'll have the opportunity to have some discussion afterwards. And this is for presentation only, no, no action is required this evening. So thank you, I will hand it over to the team.
Thank you so much, I really appreciate this. Good evening, everyone. My name is Tinola. I'm a first year Masters of Sustainable Peacebuilding student. Tonight, myself and my colleagues, Anna and Edward, whom you're going to meet shortly. We have been fortunate to embark on this amazing project all through the semester. And tonight, we want to share with you some of our findings and how we have imputed the things that we are learning in the classroom also into this project. Before we start our presentation tonight, I want to express a profound gratitude to the staff of Department of Public Works, Shorewood, the staff and leadership team of Shorewood as a whole, and of course, to each and every one of you, Board of Trustees. Over the past few weeks, myself and my colleagues, we are being completely, you know, delved into a terrific reading, research, and also, and of course, consultation process with each and every one of these different stakeholders I just mentioned, which we are very grateful for. And at the outcome of this, we've come up with different presentations and of course, recommendations from what's from our findings. And we hope that you would have a terrific time with us today. The order of our presentation is going to take place in this forum. We're going to be sharing with you an overall of our work, the outcome of our facilitation, as well as the analysis of the facilitation we had with the staff and the decision tree that we developed from the outcome of this facilitation. And of course, a detailed analysis of the different reports that we have been able to verify and make tremendous research over. So I'm going to hand over to my colleague Anna, who's going to take us in the lead presentation for tonight's event. And thank you so much again for your time, for your commitment, this mean a lot to us. And I wanted to know that in the past few weeks, this project has really been an eye opener for us and a tremendous opportunity. So over to you, Anna.
Thank you so much, Tinola. I'm going to share my screen now. And put it on presenter view for you. Minimize this, can everybody see my slide?
Yes.
Okay, great. So first, we feel it's important to frame the village and its built environment, which specifies the demands on the DPW. At about 1.6 square miles with a population of almost 14,000, it is one of Milwaukee's most dense municipalities. Founded in 1900, it retains its historic built environment as well as historic spatial patterns in the European tradition. This creates a highly rated walkable and bike friendly environment with infrastructure for a thriving local business district. It has many parks with opportunities to connect to nature and you value being ecologically conscious. There is a tradition of craftsmanship, specialization, and an expectation of top tier services. All of these things are genuine assets to the village that you all undoubtedly would like to maintain. And for the DPW, they create specific challenges as the public works industry and service expectations evolve, while the village must adapt according to its original skeleton. The dense nature of the community and its narrow streets and alleys with limited off street parking and maneuverability presents special problems in maintaining infrastructure systems, as well as additional challenges in providing essential services such as waste collection and snow and ice control. This in addition to maintaining one of the village's most prized possessions, its mature urban forest of more than 6,500 trees. Yet, all of this is done from aged inefficient facilities and site constructed from the 1930s with a very different deployment of services at that time. Yet it remains that nonetheless, public works are the lifeblood of this well functioning community's built environment. The DPW lies on a 3.4 acre long and narrow site on the western edge of the village that abuts an old rail line that has been transformed into a green bike and pedestrian corridor, the Oak Leaf Trail. It is considered a first generation style yard typically built within the first ring suburbs of a metropolitan area. It is served by five buildings of various size and quality, including a former incinerator, a scale, a waste transfer station, including compactors, which is also utilized by Whitefish Bay, public recycling receptacles, above ground fuel tanks, fleet equipment, material storage, and more. Three buildings are original to the site and there have been two additional cold storage buildings assimilated in conjunction with recycling. The site is entered and exited by staff and public from one access point. From here, the DPW operates its three divisions, utilities, fleet and facilities, and services. Of note is that in comparison studies, Shorewood contracts for quite a number of services compared to other communities. The village has taken advantage of exploring these opportunities and efficiency innovations. Taking into account the physical deficiencies of DPW facilities and site, our evaluation has found that staff is likely operating at the highest level of efficiency possible. Thus, at this point in time, the calculus for adding contracted or shared services becomes more complicated as you cannot simply replace a staff person with a contracted worker one to one. As a NOVAC report put it, the existing frontline staff function is generalist. Each has core duties, but in practice, they all assist with other necessary functions as their capacity allows. This complicates any potential plan to reduce staffing by contracting out additional services. If the department contracts out one service and eliminates the associated staff positions, it will also lose staff capacity for other service areas. The deferment of needed upgrades at this level for a facility is really unprecedented in the village. There's a web of interconnected courses that has brought the village and its DPW to this point. In a village of this age, a lot can come do all at once and there is a carrying capacity of political will and attention each budget cycle. The village has a deeply engaged civic sense and has met these demands. But the DPW has had to carry more than its fair share of load to allow other facilities improvements to proceed. As you know, DPW staff is an important group of stakeholders, which which with which village leadership now has an opportunity to balance those scales of accountability. As systems thinkers, we like to use various models to discover the underlying dynamics of visible events. This iceberg model helps us to consider the invisible pattern structures and deep mental models that create current conditions. For the DPW, what is visible, especially to the untrained eye, is that the operations and facilities and staff seem to function well as service on all the big things remains good. We are seeing staff as stoic and meeting their demands, but in conversation, you can hear that morale is waning. Underneath that visible event, there is a pattern of staff continually stretching, adjusting, and dealing with poor conditions to accommodate less supports and more inefficiencies. Preventative maintenance is deferred, high indirect costs of inefficiency pay for direct and immediate cost savings. Underneath that is a system of hiring consultants to report on conditions and operations, moving forward on some small things, but not foundational needs. The structure does not tie gathering information and data to action steps. And at the deepest levels, you have what the delay may communicate about beliefs. These are only questions, but consider whether DPW workers and work are held in the same esteem as other departments. Are there passive agreements about positioning of their work to class and power? And so to potentially leverage change in these structures and patterns, we want to look at how to synchronize a decision making process so that it serves the facility and operations performance, which in turn will allow the departments to meet the high demand for services at a good price. If you look at all of these components on the screen as part of one system, the delay of policy decisions has instead of supporting facility function been an added challenge to them. And again, this is in the nature of managing the complex demands of a historic municipality and not a matter of passports or individuals not meeting responsibilities at all. That is not what we're saying. We are saying that moving forward, we feel something useful can be learned from looking at how the system has functioned in the past. And this is a new opportunity to be intentional about how you structure your time and process together. One key observation in our evaluation is that the delay is not due to less information being available for the DPW. Over the past 15 years, the village has invested in a consultant report for the DPW on average every three years. Going through these reports will give you a clear perspective of ongoing and intractable issues and that foundational remediation of some type is sorely needed. It started in, I believe, it started in 1999 with the Zimmerman retaining wall study. That wall still has not gotten the repairs it needs since then. In 2007, Zimmerman did a PD and DPW facility study with pro forma and located new sites for potential relocation of DPW. 2010, Springstead did a PD and DPW service prioritization with surveys of comparison communities. Sigma in 2014 did a DPW facility master plan and pro forma for redeveloping the current site. 2020, NOVAC did the organizational analysis with 22 recommendations divided into themes. This year, FGMA is finishing up their detailed DPW facility conditions assessment. And of course, we are doing the decision evaluation, which has been no direct cost to the village. And so an interesting comparison, but not a causation, is that on average, a new report every three years and trustee terms are three years. And every year, a vote is held for two trustees, so technically, a fully new board minus the president could cycle in every three years. And that is what happened uncommonly with this board. You're all in your first terms and I believe this is your first meeting as a full board. This is a great opportunity moving forward to consider your leadership vis a vis how election and budget rhythms impact the culture and process of making long term decisions for the village, such as addressing a 50 year investment in the DPW facility. As you balance short term pressures with long term investments for several generations down the road, we suggest concretely considering the costs of short term savings to long term efficiencies. We'd like to frame this with a quote from the Springstead report. They said, "In all of our meetings with management and employees, the importance of addressing infrastructure and facilities was identified as a major concern." As one employee put it, "The village is working on cosmetics, but needs to pay attention to the foundation." There are common corrective processes that fail to function as intended, which we have seen when analyzing the history of DPW efforts. First, we have the quick fix. When you stop investing in the solution, when immediate problems appear solved. The second is shifting the burden, not appreciating the time required to get returns on these types of investments. And the third is self created limits. By investing insufficiently in an organization, one fails to inadequately fund the capacity required to meet needs. And it might be interesting to note here that in 2020, NOVAC reported that the village of Shorewood spends significantly less on public work services than peer communities. Part of the reason for this disparity may be due to the village's embrace of contracting and alternative service delivery models to reduce costs. Another consideration is whether Shorewood DPW has been allocated appropriate resources to effectively support existing service demands in the community. Yet alongside these insufficient evasements, there have been unseen financial costs to these common pitfalls that may be difficult to detect over time. As you move forward, as you move forward with addressing the major needs of DPW at each juncture of the decision making process, consider whether you are expecting every piece of information before making a decision, whether you are postponing the DPW issue and diverting attention to other projects, and whether you are focusing in on certain details and missing the big picture. Through our evaluation, we also believe that times of the essence. In a poll of about 11 departmental leaders of Shorewood, on the importance of moving toward one of the options this year on a scale of one of most urgent to five least urgent, all of their hands shot up instantly indicating one, that the need to take action this year is of urgent importance. And although there is urgency to this decision, it is important to keep the perspective that this is not a quick decision for the village. Even though you may be relatively new to the issue, the process is not starting here. And so how do you integrate that knowledge and wisdom of almost two decades of analysis and continual improvements to staff and operations efficiency toward action steps this year? There is ample evidence for needed action steps. The facility has been at a tipping point for about 15 years. In these pictures from the 2010 report, you can see issues that still have not been remediated. You can see some of the village's most expensive equipment being stored outside, unsecured and close to residences. You can see vehicles parking each other in. You can see items being stored in any available empty floor space and you can see exposed V bar. In addition to this, to reach the director's office, you have to pass through the director of operations office. This severely limits confidentiality issues like disciplinary conversations or working with customers to resolve complaints. These could also be possible HIPAA conflicts. The employee locker areas are small and crowded. Layout is inefficient from an operating perspective in general. There's a lack of conference space, restrooms are not handicap accessible. The training room is not large enough to accommodate all employees having a place to sit. These are just a sample of the issues that have been ongoing for decades. And so now I want to point to one of the major interrelated themes of all five reports over the years. And that cited facilities performance. All of the reports also cover operations and staff efficiencies, equipment and fleet, maintenance, preventative maintenance, deferred maintenance, and comparison communities. In 2007, Zimmerman noted that the site is perhaps the most critical factor for a DPW operation. In addition to this, the site inadequately stores some of the village's most expensive equipment. The equipment requires frequent service and the facilities for maintenance do not have enough space and the flow of other service staff often interrupts maintenance work. Zimmerman also noted that the site is currently designed so that pedestrians are forced to use vehicular right of ways to gain access to the building, characterizing that as unsafe and unacceptable. In 2010, Springstead labeled the site as obsolete and inadequate. The facility has a negative impact on operating efficiency. The physical condition of the workspaces not consisted with accepted public works practices, obviously to the detriment of the people working in those spaces. They were impressed by staff willingness to pull together as needed to get the job done, which they found notable when considering the limitations imposed by the inadequacies of the facility. They characterized the site as a hodgepodge of buildings. In 2014, Sigma noted that there still have been no permanent remediation efforts on the retaining wall and that it continues to degrade. The long narrow shape of the site poses significant challenges, they said. And the asphalt is in poor condition and needs to be replaced. They pointed out that there are no stormwater management controls and that the primary site deficiency is a conflict of storing individual pieces of equipment. The maintenance shop is located below grade and often floods. In 2020, NOVAC noted that facilities were not designed to support modern equipment and operations. They said, "One very true efficiency is the DPW lot." They said, "The village has studied this multiple times and with the conclusion that the existing facilities are inadequate, this analysis shares the concerns. Minimal renovation has been done, leading to an energy inefficient facility with virtually no space for meetings or collaboration. Conditions require mechanics to perform maintenance repairs outdoors, even in adverse weather conditions. The village should address operational issues by developing a plan to provide a more appropriate facility for its DPW operations." And this year, the facility's condition assessment states that the layout of the site prevents efficiency. There are immediate safety and code issues and unnecessarily high operating and utility costs. The overall building envelope is a concern in all buildings. Building systems are at or well past their useful life. Note that almost every issue that is identified is repeated in all five of the reports to some extent or another. These issues have costs that really add up over time. In terms of energy inefficiencies, the DPW budgeted about $172,000 for utility costs in the year 2020. In comparison, Whitefish Bay, which has similar population size, but a much newer facility, budgeted only $40,000. So let's say Shorewood had upgraded the facilities in 2007 and spent not 172,000, but 92,000 a year. Had the village done that, we would have saved about $1.2 million over the years. And because of the lack of vehicle storage space, staff must spend between 30 minutes and an hour each day simply to access their vehicles. This translates to more than 3,500 staff hours per year spent accessing and parking vehicles, and estimated $145,000 of staff time that provides no direct service to the community. So let's conservatively estimate that this has been going on for the past 15 years. That is $2.2 million the village has paid to have staff simply access vehicles and park them at night. In addition to the cost of time, there's a real cost to staff morale in this. At the end of a long shift, the middle of the night after plowing snow, now you have to engage in a negotiation with colleagues and spend 30 minutes to park a vehicle. It is seriously draining. And there, those are just two examples. There are other efficiencies you can find hard numbers for that are costing the village. Paying more than a fair share in shared service agreements, additional wear and tear of expensive equipment having to be stored outside, not enough storage to purchase bulk materials for the entire season, inefficient site storage for other material, immediate service expectations on staff that create workload inefficiencies overall. And while these losses continue to go mostly unseen, focus and attention on the quicker fixes of staffing efficiency have continued. The general fund budgeted salary expenditures are effectively 14% lower or have been effectively 14% lower in fiscal year 2020 than actual expenditures were in 2016. Adjusted for inflation, the total DPW 2020 salary expenditure reflects a 4% decline compared to 2016. So the decision process you are stepping into now can firstly be described as bridging the gap. I really like this image because I think it's a powerful metaphor for how the DPW staff are holding things together. Only under the DPW feet, that brick is falling. Simply characterizing this as facilities modernization might not convey that reality. New or updated facilities are firstly rightsizing. They're bridging the gap to meet current facility realities. In this process, you also have an opportunity to further modernize facilities according to sustainable best practice in addition to giving yourselves flexibility to develop additional service and operational innovations. To recap, the village can't simply add more contracted services and eliminate staff positions. Shorewood is already spending less per capita than municipalities and it looks like cost for staffing has gone down significantly over the years and not met average inflation. After our evaluation, we feel that reconfiguring service levels does not precede updating the facility. An updated facility will allow you the flexibility to reconfigure service levels with more leverage while not losing money to needless inefficiencies. And so going back to the reports, they all contain valuable information that is still useful to you. Yet that information is not necessarily arranged in a way that makes clear what a strategic action plan would look like. NOVAC provided a set of 22 recommendations that you see here within themes, but not in order of operation for a strategic plan. And if you remember PEMDAS from school, parentheses, exponents, multiplication, division, addition, subtraction, all the information for the previous studies and staff expertise is telling us that addressing the physical facilities, the foundation for operation is your first order of operation. All of their steps will be made more cost effective and efficient because of this. If we were to get denser finding into one thesis, that might be it. We removed the numbers from the recommendations you see here and reordered them in a suggested order of action, first, second, third. The items that are crossed at the bottom have or are being addressed currently. Now I'm going to turn it over to Tinola, who's going to go over the survey on staff and trustee opinions with you. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Anna. That was, thank you. So as you can see, and just as I said earlier on, the basis of our research had transitioned from review of different research document to a survey distribution that we did and to the facilitation that we conducted. The basis of my presentation is focused on the survey responses that we shared to everyone a couple of weeks back. So on the 21st of April, we received responses from 21 people out of the total number of 22 people that the survey was sent out to. And among the 21 people, we had six of them being a part of the Board of Trustees, while the rest were members of staff. And this is what the responses we received looked like. For the basis of tonight's presentation, we have segmented this into three categories. We have separated the Board of Trustees' response differently, the staff response, and all the responses together. And we're going to be reviewing the two most prioritized options that we identified. So for those of you that field the survey, we're very grateful for it and this is what the response looked like. On the screen here is the responses from Board of Trustees. A total number of six people filled the survey form. And if you look at this, we have different order of priority as well as, you know, the different five options we've identified. We have the representations in colors at the lower part on the, on the screen. And it's evident that the top priority, which is number one, I hope you can see my screen good. The number one identifies the most preferred options by those who had filled this form. And to a larger extent, we all can see that on the chart, the option representing the green color, which is move and build a new DPW facility in a new location, taking a dominant position on the most preferred option one. And if we take a little bit of shift to the second option, then we have two options dominating the chart. And the two options are stay in the same location and repair current facility, taking the position of 60%. And we have 40% of the respondent identifying, demolishing, and rebuilding the facilities at the current location at their top priority on the scale of second position. So from the general analysis that we did, for the sake of today's presentation, we are just going to be talking about the most preferred, the first preferred, and the second most preferred options. And I'm just going to take you a little bit back. If you look at the number one chart, on the most preferred option, we can see 200% of the respondent identifying, demolishing, and rebuilding the facility at the current location at their top priority. And 40% of them identifying it as their second most preferred option, right? So that kind of make us to reach a conclusion, as much as we are, we see all the five options as important, but the response we have received is the basis of our analysis. So this kind of make us to come to a conclusion that the dominant options on this chart from the Board of Trustees are the option, move and build a new DPW facility in a new location. the option move and build a new DPW facility in a new location, which received a forty percent response as the first option, and demolish and rebuild the facilities at the current location, which received a twenty percent response as the first most preferred option, and forty percent as the second most preferred option. So let's take a look at what the staff response looked like. On this slide, we received a total number of fifteen staff fill this form, and this is what their analysis looked like. Their first most preferred option kind of tend towards two options. Then we have move and build a new DPW facility in a new location, taking a dominant position on the first and the second most preferred portion of fifty-seven point one-four percent and thirty-five point seven-one percent respectively. And we can also see the move and build a new DPW facility in a new location, taking the position of the first chart, the first most preferred option, as well as the second most preferred options in the order of forty-two point eight-six percent and fifty percent respectively. That being said, again, we are not trying to, we are not taking side in what actually matters in terms of these options, but our survey analysis is outrightly taking the position of what are the two most preferred options dominating this analysis? And as you can see evidently on the chart, it remains these two options. Now let's look at what all the analyses of this respondents we received look like on the next slide. Here is what all the analysis we received, a total number of, from a total number of twenty-one people consisting of both the staff of Shorewood and the Board of Trustees. And as you can see on this chart, that the dominant, the dominant option on the first most preferred option and the second most preferred option still goes with moving and building a new DPW facility in a new location, which is taking the position of forty-two point one-one percent on the first most preferred option and thirty-six point, I'm going to say that again, pardon me please. So on this chart, we can see that the most preferred option is demolishing and rebuild the facilities at the current location, which is taking for the seven point three-seven percent as a most preferred option, and the second most preferred option, but taking thirty-six point eight-four percent. On the flip side, we have the second most preferred option, taking the position of forty-two point one-one percent and thirty-six point eight-four percent again. And that is the option demolishing and rebuilding the facility at the current location. The next slide is going to talk about what are the identified limitations and benefits of these two options as indicated in the survey responses we received from all the respondents. So please, this is what it looks like. So for the sake of this analysis, myself and my colleagues, we used the tool called Mural, one of the tools we learned in the classroom, to do this analysis. The bigger the sizes of the words on the screen simply interprets to the number of people that actually identify this as limitations. I'm going to say that again. If you look at the screen, you would see that the different words appear in different sizes. The larger the sizes of the words on the screen simply mean the number of people that identify this as a limiting factor, or as a case may be in the benefit category. So here we have words that are dominating across the responses we received. Words around service interruption, unpredictable high cost, unsupported size, historical building loss, activities interruptions, and unpredictable site issues. These limitations were identified for the option of rebuilding the facility at the current location, should it be considered. On the next slide, here is are the limitations that we put together for the option of moving and building a new DPW facility in a new location. And here, the dominant word or group of words is unpredictable high cost. And we have other responses, proximity accessibility, slow emergency response, unpredictable land cost, and of course, we'll take it to the smaller words, which are environmental impact, unpredictable design time, uncertain location, need-based site, or non-location land availability. These are the different responses we received from those that had filled the survey form. On the next couple of slides, we're going to be looking at, before I go to the benefits, I want us to take a flip back to the previous slide and this slide for the limitations. Costs seem to be a dominant, a dominant factor that was identified as a limitation for these two options, should they be considered? Now let's take it to the next slide, the identified or highlighted benefits of the option of rebuilding the facilities at the current location. And one word that kind of dominates and cuts across the different responses we received here is accessibility. It's taken a larger portion of the screen, right? And we have other options as well, just a little bit smaller, like site optimization, efficiency, efficient service, land not required, low cost. Do not forget that on the limitation, we have cost as an identified limitation. But what low cost mean in this context, we believe is going to be more of what my colleague just presented to us. The overall implication of costs of perhaps considering the other options and the overall cost implications of going for this option ultimately would result to a lower cost. Optimum service, site familiarity, historical preservation. These are the benefits for the option of rebuilding the facilities at the current location as put together by the respondent, from the respondents we received. On the next slide here, we have the benefits of moving and building a new DPW facility in a new location. And here we have some group of words that kind of dominates the screen. And these words are continued operation, modern site, redevelop current sites, efficient operations, bigger facilities. And we have words that are taking a smaller position. Here again, we have lower cost, we have space, residential safety, community visibility, eradication of problems, and consolidation option. I think consolidation option in this regard simply mean should DPW be erected on a new facility, on a new land entirely, perhaps there could be a consolidation option with the community that owns the land. I want to take us a little bit back to what my colleague said earlier during our presentation about what the Village of Shorewood stand for with the resident, which is the provision of optimum service. And if you look at the benefit that has been identified on the screen, a number of people have identified efficiency in operations as a dominant benefit on both options that I just presented here. Now I'm going to take us through some of the questions that were raised on the survey that we shared. These are questions for decision-making. And one of the questions we have here talked about time. How soon can this start raising the current DPW site? There is a question around the possibility of rebuilding on the same site. There is a question around the preferred location if we are considering building a new site location. I'm sure some of this must be answered, will be answered in our presentation by my other colleagues. The pros and cons of rebuilding on the new site or not. I'm pretty sure, should there be a decision-making after our presentation tonight, this would properly be more investigated and you would uncover some of it. What type of building would be considered as standard for the DPW facility, and does the current facility location have those features? I believe some of our presentation tonight answers those questions. Some community, well, are willing to consolidate, you know, what communities are willing to consolidate with Shorewood for shared services? I want to believe as well, should the decision be made after our presentation, this would also be answered. Is there a historical significance of the current site that is worth preserving? What is the cost attached to each of those options if need to be considered? What will be the score of the building in its current state, and what is the desired score to reach? What kind of building does DPW desire for the kind of service it renders? What should the level of service be for DPW? What services should and shouldn't be provided? I believe some of our presentation have covered, have provided responses to some of those questions. And the last question on this slide here says like, can the current DPW site accommodate the desired facility? These are the questions that we received from the survey response fueled by twenty-one respondents. We really appreciate the time each and every one of you present in tonight's presentation, and those that might not be on site, provided us to be able to do this analysis. I'm going to hand over to my colleague Edward, who's going to take us on the other part of our presentation. Thank you so much for listening.
Thank you, Tina Olah. Could I have the ability to share, please? Okay, thank you. Alright, so my name is Edward, and I'm going to look at the facilitation and the decision tree. In addition to talking about the human costs. And so for the facilitation, we conducted an information gathering facilitation that included leadership from both the DPW and from other departments with the goal of getting input from both DPW staff who are in the situation and other outside Shorewood public servants who would have differing experiences and different ideas. And then we use that information to create a decision-making tree that the board can use going forward. The decision-making tree is not set in stone, and it's a working document that can be built on in the future. And the points are from staff, and they are just sort of a starting point. And you can use those points for departure in the decision-making process as you go forward. And I will have, or there will be a more elaborate decision-making tree in the report. So to start off, we, because of how the survey came out, we chose to focus on rebuilding on the current location and moving locations to a new facility, or to a new area and then building. I'm just going to focus on one section of the tree, and I'm going to go with rebuilding on the current location, sort of to give you guys an idea of how this tree will work. So for, to help you with this process. So we have two branches here with
Yeah. Zoom in a little closer on your diagram. That's great. Thank you so much.
Okay, yeah. Sorry about that. So there are two branches of what information is needed for a decision now, and what information is not needed and can be ferred out later. So following the information that is needed for a decision now, we have another two branches with the information we have access to now, and I'm going to focus on just one example, which will be the costs. So this is information that staff has and can get to the board. And just focusing on this one would be what costs can be funded by TID in District Three. And so that's information that is accessible now and can be given, or that can be provided to the board. And then going on this branch to information that still are, that still needs to be gotten, and I'm going to focus on just this one, which is political and community support for rebuilding on the current location. And then branching off, so going from that one to, is it reasonable to get that information now? And if so, how do we get that info? And so yes, it is reasonable to get the information about community and political support through using surveys, PIM, and stakeholder analysis. And then moving to what are the consequences of moving forward without that information? It would be that the length of the project may outlast political will. And so getting an idea of where people stand is going to be important in terms of needing that information going forward, and then going to the other branch of what information is not needed now. And I'll go with our grants available to preserve historical areas. This is something that can be ironed out later in the process, and it is not something needed for an immediate decision now. And so that's just a brief overview of the tree, and again, this will be fleshed out more later into, or in the report. So, and now going to the human element. And this is the final piece that I would like to talk about. Because there has been a lack of acknowledgement of the human costs for DPW staff. We were not asked to make this a part of the report, but it arose consistently, and we thought it was important to include. The working conditions and worker safety were mentioned continuously during the entire evaluation process and were brought up numerous times in the facilitation. The staff are putting their health and livelihoods on the line to serve the people of Shorewood. They want to provide excellent service, yet they are not given the tools they need to do their jobs in a safe and constructive manner. As Anna pointed out earlier, DPW staff has been holding the ship together despite the lack of resources they have to work with. And in the pictures that were shown of the facility and the areas that were falling apart, and showed sort of the conditions that staff have to deal with. And there will be more pictures that the board will have a chance to look at in the new facility analysis. And so as the facility continues to age and degrade, the likelihood of an accident increases as well as the severity of that accident, which puts workers in a tough spot where they have to choose between their own safety and doing their jobs. And this also affects leadership who have to ask them to do that. And sort of an example would be that mechanics do not have enough room to operate on vehicles and have to work on them outside of the shelter of the garage. And this means that the mechanics are exposed to the cold, the heat, and the elements. This means that they are at risk for frostbite and heat stroke and other issues that can hurt their ability to do their jobs, but also affect their lives in the future and their ability to work going forward. And we have already seen that a mechanic has left for another municipality due to the poor working conditions. And this worker turnover means that there is a loss in situational knowledge and knowledge of the environment and what goes into working at the Shorewood DPW. It also means that there is going to be less camaraderie and connections between workers, just because if there is a higher level of turnover. And this will increase as the facility continues to degrade and age. And another example of where the facility is falling apart is water leaks in through the ceiling, which are causing damage. And the floor and ceiling and walls are not designed for that water damage, which has led to many issues that were not accounted for. And one, we heard that mosquito eggs can can get within the walls due to the water issues, and then they need to be removed to prevent the mosquitoes from running amok in the building, and that takes time from the workers. And it also can make working in the building miserable at times. Another example is that we heard of mushrooms growing out of the floor. And this is another thing that then takes time to deal with, and it makes it much more difficult to work within that situation. And so this is not, this is not sustainable for the staff who have to put up with the situation without having the ability to change it directly. And what staff is going through is something that the board should acknowledge and take into consideration when making this decision. Thank you, and I'm going to turn it over to Anna for recommendations. Uh, thank you, and I'm going to turn it over to Anna for recommendations.
Thank you so much, Edward. Um, I need to be made co-host, it looks like. Okay, there we go. See. Okay, thank you so much. Um. So as we move into discussing our suggestions for next steps, we'd like to quickly review the common pitfalls of solving complex problems. As you move forward with each juncture of the decision making process, ask yourself with each question. Is this a quick fix? Am I shifting the burden? Are these self-created limits? Am I in analysis paralysis? Is this going to address the foundational issues? So moving forward and all things considered, we do feel that two options remain plausible with an asterix on consolidation. Taking into consideration the historical knowledge on the timeline and political dynamics of consolidation. Requiring decades of preceding negotiations, moving forward with only exploring consolidation. At this point is really shifting the burden and installing self-created limits by not investing in what is needed for services. And staff's basic wellbeing now. With that said, updating and modernizing facilities may in fact give Shorewood more leverage and flexibility in the future. If it chooses to open these discussions around consolidated efforts. We also feel it is important to address the issue of the WPA air buildings and preservation. We feel this is a secondary consideration, uh, secondary order of operation after you, after you have made a decision. On whether to move forward on one of the two top preferred options for the DPW facility. Neither of those options precludes or necessitates maintaining the facades of the older buildings. Either option definitively takes preservation to one extent or another off the table. Opportunities for it and barriers to it can be explored when you know within which context the preservation discussion is being held. As part of the facilities or as part of a new development. The DPW is um, designated as a Milwaukee County landmark. That designation um, is not a legal tool. It's for educational purposes only. Lastly, we also feel it is important to again note that hinging the decision on immediate cost comparisons. May not be the most strategic and impactful metric when there are large to medium long-term cost efficiencies to be made. So the decision you are left with in our estimation is rebuild facilities on current site or move facilities to a new site. For either option, a main determinant is refuse, refuse and the transfer tape, transfer station. Um, it's important to note that you are currently looking at shared waste transfer services agreements with Whitefish Bay. Your current agreement with them to negotiate something that is more equitable. And you have already looked at outsourcing refuse collection. You have the knowledge now to determine that outsourcing refuse is not a good option. Um, there are really no good private sector options or affordable contract terms that will meet the expected level of service. There is also the issue of whether you can move the transfer station to another site and distribute operations across sites. Um, this has been described as generally not feasible within the current organizational structure. With appropriate security considerations and/or if one of the sites is storage only, operational issues could be addressed over two sites. But if both sites are active and require management, a office at one location, transfer station at the other. The structure and staff would require modification, i.e. you would likely need to hire more staff and increase operations costs. Thereby decreasing overall efficiency gains. So looking at the two options forward, refuse is the major determinant. Um, and on the left-hand side, we've looked at some of the main considerations of rebuilding new facilities on the current site. And so if you leave the transfer tape station on the current site and you're going to rebuild the facilities there. Will that size and shape of that site still be sufficient? Also, we want to note and for your consideration, whether or not. Service interruption while redeveloping the site is something to take into consideration in this long-term decision. Should that really be a factor that determines your decision as it is um, temporary inconvenience? And again, moving facilities to a new site, the refuse will be the major determinant of the size of site needed. Um, and you'll have to consider if you do move to a new site, what will the revenue be from the old site? Minus the cost of the new site over time, plus the long-term savings of the new site. Does that number equal a positive number that offsets any, offsets any distance inconvenience? So these are the sort of large chunks we're suggesting that you consider as you look at these options. And as you look at these options, we also suggest that you revisit the Sigma and Zimmerman reports for perspective. In this map here, you see that Zimmerman in 2007 identified three available sites that were likely to meet your needs. Um, we're not sure if they're available now, but I just wanted to give you a um, a look at the map. To see where their locations were vis a vis the DPW site um, on green, which you can see there. Um, you may already be aware of this, but it actually is a very common thing for municipalities to locate facilities outside of their jurisdiction. This would not be an unusual or abnormal decision for a village of your size, population and constraints. I just think it's interesting also to look at the different pattern of the built environment. It's clearly more industrial as you cross, cross the river to the west. And I, I do know the city of Milwaukee did put out an RFP for the Holden site in 2021. And I didn't see um, an accepted project for that. And then in 2014, Sigma did and Zimmerman also did a financial performer for those three sites as well. And then Zimmer did, did this redevelopment plan with a cost analysis. In blue, you have the um, new construction and the old um, redeveloped buildings in orange. They did in their design not think that the buildings, um, the older buildings could be preserved. And they also in their design suggested moving the transfer taste, transfer station offsite, so that's not located here. And again, these are just for your perspective and as a resource for you as you dig deeper um, and how to move forward. So our suggestions on a timeline for moving forward together. We suggest over the next four months, you make a decision and choose to move forward with next steps. To either stay at the site and rebuild or move to a new site. Then in that way, you can allocate funds for these next steps by September for the 2023 budget. The fourth quarter of this year, you can issue an RFQ for 2023 pre-development plans after you made a decision on the sites. And then in 2023, you can move forward with focusing the LRB budget bookmark and moving forward with portions of the development of the pre-development aspects. And um, that's the end of our presentation and we're happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you so much. That was really powerful. So what I would like is to, I would look, like to open it up. And um, and I think I'd like to at least go around once and just see what resonated, what gave you pause um, in listening. This is a lot of information. Um, and I'd like to do that first. And then we can take questions, keeping in mind that they're probably technical questions. It sounds like um, can be part of a future agenda. Um, questions related to this process or any content that was presented tonight would be most relevant. So Chair of Public Works, would you like to begin? What resonated, what's paused?
Uh, and thank you guys. That was a, that was a really impactful presentation and uh, quite a bit amount of work went into that. So really appreciate all of that energy and thoughtfulness because that was um, very eye-opening. Um, you know, I love to hear what everybody else here thinks. Um, we've, I've spent a lot of time thinking about this as far as Chair of DPW. But the one question that kind of resonates or sits with me a little bit while I listen to this is. If we do in fact reconstruct um, DPW in its current location. You know, given its constraints, the, the location constraints, the building constraints. Um, how do we reconstruct on that space while they stay in operation? I mean.
Is that rhetorical kind of at this point is like, that's going to be your next big question?
That would be, yeah.
Okay, because it definitely wasn't, that was not within the scope of your analysis.
I just know that it's, it's the, it, it, it was one of the higher sort of picked.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that, that's where I would end up. That would be the follow-up question that I would have, but um. We can move on to somebody else that has a.
Yeah, why don't we go around once and then we'll see if there are questions that can be answered tonight or if then. And if they can't be answered tonight, we'll leave them as rhetorical for now and come back. Make sure that they're addressed at our next um, point. Jim, why don't we just go in the circle?
Sure, um, thank you uh, for that presentation. A lot to think about there. I'm just personally as a trustee, I think the thing that's most striking is, you know, I think, I think you've returned, you returned to several times just. Um, you know how this is something that's been lingering with the village for some time and does need some resolution sooner rather than later. And um, you know, there are no obvious easy answers here. So it's, it's a lot to digest and a lot to take in. And I appreciate the um, you know, the amount of work that was put into this and the thoughtfulness in terms of looking at the um, you know, considerations. That we have to factor into any decision that we make moving forward. So um, I've nothing beyond, uh, I, I think Arthur raised an important question in terms of um, service. Um, and you know, you did set the table for some other considerations that we need to evaluate such as um, you know, service levels. And how, you know, how we envision those moving forward. But um, you know, to the point that, that those are some broader questions that we'll have to factor into this uh, decision. So a lot to unpack here, but uh, again, thank you for uh, the time and the effort in this.
Thank you, Trustee Stokbrand. We can also come back to you if you want.
I'm ready. Thank you very much for a really comprehensive look at the situation. And I'm in full agreement that something needs to be done. And I think uh, I'm fairly new on the board. I guess, you know, President McCabe has been here longer than anyone else. I don't think, you know, obviously we're looking forward, not back, but um, let's just be honest here. We had a police station that needed something done. We had a fire station that needed something done. And uh, we had flooded basements that needed to be addressed. So um, the plate's been really full. I do think that um, I'm not, I guess I want more information. I want to know more about, you know, I'll go through the Sigma and the Zimmerman reports. About um, the notion that we are at the max or collaboration or contracting out, outsourcing. Um, I guess I, I want to dig into that a little bit. Um, one thing that's not addressed here is the overall village financial picture, which to me is something. That we need to take into account, obviously because we are paying for the police station and the fire station. And we're still working on sewage infrastructure. Um, you know, for context, we had millions of dollars probably in damage in 2010. And we are still trying to do, fix the infrastructure piece of that. Um, and so that's, that's something that we have to take into account. I don't believe your costs put any of that into perspective. So you know, we have to know what we can do financially with the taxpayers in mind. How much debt can we take on to do how much, how soon, when we have these other things on our plate? Um, personally, you know, the, the public safety issues, the police, the fire, the sewer. Um, we also have to look at streetlights, which is a public safety issue, and that's going to be very expensive. And we have to look at the lead served, lead um, laterals. Um, so those are things that are weighing on my mind at the same time as this. And um, it's not to say that these, you know, the DPW is not important, obviously it is. Um, but it's just going, you know, we can only take on so much debt. We can only pay so much at a time. And so that's, um, it's making the pieces fit into the puzzle. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Lynn.
Thank you. Um, yeah, thank you very much for that really informative uh, presentation. There was a lot in there that I didn't realize going into this. Um, I think the thing that stuck out to me the most initially is really the human cost, as you mentioned. In all this, that the staff are working um, in subpar conditions. And you know, and I just think that as a whole, that's really unacceptable here. I think we need to. Take action as, as quickly as possible to kind of remedy that um, in any way that we can. And I think, you know, it's very clear that there is a need for a new facility, one way or another. The current facility is inadequate and I think that it's, you know, it's unfortunate that it's falling on our plate. It's not certainly anybody here's fault. We're all new, but uh, you know, we can't control for the past. So I think we just, I think this is pretty eye-opening that we, we have a lot of work to do going forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Kudo.
Uh, yeah, I mean, I'll just echo everyone else's comments uh, regarding the study. I, I appreciate the time that you put in, uh, you know, your expertise and, and your ability to. Discuss this and present this to us, uh, I think in a meaningful way. Um, you know, I, I've had the opportunity to tour the facility, the DBW facility and sit down with leadership over there. Um, you know, I have one of, a few of us who have longer term perspectives on the village and ser, level of services. You know, there, as Trustee Stokbrand said, there are a lot of decisions that are going to have to be made unfortunately in a very short period of time. Um, you know, not only with regards to this facility, but of course in 2024 with lead laterals. Um, and so I, you know, I look forward to learning more. Um, this is my first meeting, so I'm not going to pretend to know more than I do. Um, I look forward to learning more and, and offering whatever insight I can and asking the, you know, appropriate questions. And when the time comes, making, you know, making a decision and voting one way or the other.
Thank you.
I'll again echo everybody in saying thank you for uh, the, the time and effort you put into this. And um, I think you were able to um, you know, really succinctly. You know, capture a lot of information in a way that was digestible for everyone, so I appreciate that. Um, I would say the thing that, that stood out to me um, is really just the, the cost of doing nothing here. Um, because there, we are going to have to make a decision. And even if the decision, you know, is that financially, you know, from a fiscal standpoint, we have to wait. Because we have to balance that with other needs, you know, that's, that's something we can have that conversation. But what I don't think we can do is of, we can't afford to wait several more years before even make the decision. I think we need to settle on a course of action. What is the, what does the future look like there? And then we figure out, you know, how do we pay for this? How do we make it sustainable? Because we just can't afford to have this conversation again in a few years. Because there are always going to be other competing priorities, you know. All localities around the state are strapped for cash. We're not getting as much shared revenue. And everyone has more and more deferred maintenance piling up. Uh, it's something I saw quite a bit when I worked uh, for Milwaukee County. Um, and you know, there are always going to be pressing needs in local government and not enough money to, to solve all those problems. So I, I just hope that we can um, at least, you know, in the, in the coming months. Decide on a path forward and what, what the solution will be. And then we can, as you know, as a group, we'll figure out how we're going to get there.
Thank you. Um, yeah, I was surprised that I felt emotional a couple of times. Um, and even though, you know, I've, I've sat through presentations and reports and things like that. Um, but kind of seeing it all laid out like this. Um, you know, especially 15 years worth of analysis was a different experience for me. And something that I definitely think that I needed. I would also, I think what um, a couple of things that stood out too was the slide of. You know, even though it, it, it feels like we're just starting to make this decision. And it's, you know, ironically, the, the first meeting of the new board of 2022. Um, there's 15 years of work behind us that we can dip into. And I think that that's really important to keep in mind. It also holds us accountable to get up to speed. And even if we've read the reports to go, to go back and reread them again, kind of with this, these kinds of lenses and frameworks in mind. Um, after we've heard so much more. Um, I think there was a second thing that jumped out at me, but I'm not thinking of it now. Um, I think I would like to um, hear from staff um, after. I think I would like to hear from staff after seeing this presentation. Leanne, would you like to, what was it like to see this and presented after working on it and carrying this, all this information for so long?
Thank you. It's been very, a bit surreal, I would say. It feels a lot, in certain senses, like an out-of-body experience, like someone made a movie of your life and you're watching someone else play the part of you. Because these are discussions that we have been having for many years and live with really on a daily basis. And to a certain point, I think some of these things have become second nature or something that we have learned to live with, which I think we all do in our own lives to a certain extent. Sometimes you just need fresh eyes to look at things and say, hey, why, why are you doing it that way? Don't you realize you could be doing it differently? You could be doing it more effectively, more efficiently. And we have had many people, as noted, over the last 15 years, you know, come in and make that observation, provide those recommendations. And I think everyone at DPW certainly understands the notion of competing realities. And in particular, you know, I do believe that no one knows better than we do the demands of our infrastructure and some of the deferred maintenance that has impacted the very projects that have been mentioned this evening, the police department, the fire department, the combined sewer system. Again, I don't believe anybody understands those impacts better than we do at DPW. But I do, if you would permit me, would just like to take the opportunity to really reinforce the daily impact that this has on, on staff and on morale. And in particular, I think as we move forward in this sort of new age that we live in, our ability to retain and attract talent. You know, we directly compete in most cases with the other North Shore communities. Very few of the people that we employ live in the North Shore area. Most of them are driving in from outer ring suburbs. And so we really need to, there, there's multiple factors that are incorporated into what makes a place desirable to work or attract outside talent. I think we do a pretty good job of holding onto people once we get them. But it is becoming more difficult to attract talent. And when you are competing with other communities of similar size, similar nature, you know, one big thing people look at is drive time. Another that they look at is wages and compensation. A third that they look at is working conditions. We have, quite honestly, have a difficult time competing on any of those three. Drive times are pretty difficult as a competitive factor when we're drawing from outer ring suburbs. Wages, you know, that's a continually evolving issue that was addressed to a degree last year. The third thing that is really, really difficult for us to compete on is the facilities. I think it was referred earlier in the presentation. As you, as many of you know, we're working currently with one mechanic. We have traditionally had two. We lost our chief mechanic to Brown Deer last year. Brown Deer is in a relatively new, less than five-year-old building. And when speaking with that gentleman about his choice to move, that was one of the first things that he brought up, is the ability to work in a state-of-the-art, clean, safe working environment. Some of our other neighbors, Whitefish Bay has a brand-new facility. Some of the others are looking at facilities, no one's is nearly as old as ours. So that's something that I think about on a very regular basis. And I think is often something that doesn't necessarily get looked at or discussed when we talk about improvements to building infrastructure, whether it be the Village Hall, DPW, police station, fire station. There's a real impact on things other than just the building itself. So appreciate your listening. Thank you.
Thank you. Any staff that are here with us in person would like to comment?
Well, I want to thank the UWM graduate class because I think working with them was really an outstanding process. When I first got to the village, this was one of the issues that was on the table. And like we all said, that there's reasons why we move forward in communities at different times. I'm not doing my job if we don't have this discussion because I see it from a business perspective. I see those impacts that it has for you in the future. And since I've been here, we haven't leaned into having future-focused discussions. Where are we going? Where do we want to be in a certain number of years? Because those, from my perspective, those are, that's the business, right? So we financially plan, we lay out those options, we lean into it, and then we try to make the best decisions that we can. So no matter what those decisions are coming out from this group, it's apparent to me that we have the discussion because that's what we do, that's what I do. So having that is also with a check-in to say, here's where we are. Now, how do we want to, how do we want to proceed with that board? And as you can tell, it's a big gorilla, right? So it's one piece at a time. Also like to share to you that I appreciate leaning into those challenging discussions because they're really backbones to fostering careful, thoughtful decision-making within the scope of the community. So I look forward to the opportunity to do this with you and to have these discussions. You can look forward to a written report from these consultants that are, and I call them consultants, but UWM students, because they've done a really good job. We see a lot of consultants around here, and they've been just a pleasure to be able to work with. And they're going to be coming back with a final report to you in June. In the near future, we're going to have FGMA come back and provide their report on the facility conditions assessment, which was Public Works, but then also Village Hall. So we'll have that data point come back. And then I'm going to be circling back with the board to make some thoughtful, have some thoughtful discussion and decisions relative to how we gear and plan and do our jobs to lean into the future of this facility. So that's all I have for you at this time, but I really want to take the time to thank the staff who took a lot of time from their schedule and leaned into things every time we got to different points in the discussion. Even people, you know, I'll use Leanne as an example, I'll use our foreman from utilities, I'll use the SRC director, who really had to sit and reflect to themselves on a lot of these issues because it's not just a department issue. Public Works impacts a number of different services that we have. So it was a thoughtful, productive way to spend our time. And so I'm looking forward to reading the final report. And just thank you so much for all of your time working with us.
Thank you very much. It was a pleasure.
Clerk Carol or Assistant Village Manager Anderson, do you have anything? No pressure, but it's just, it's unusual to have this type of presentation. And I know that you participated, well, you didn't.
But I just want to say to Leanne and Joel and the other DPW staff, kudos to you. This has been a very long process, and I was not aware that it was being studied this long. And for you all to continue doing the selfless work that you do on a daily basis and keeping this village up and running, kudos, kudos to you. I look forward to seeing what the process will be in the future.
Thank you.
And I would, is this one on?
Yep, but you gotta go right in there.
Okay, now I can hear myself. I would just echo a lot of the comments that I've heard from the board. I've been a part of facility condition assessments before, and actually not being able to see in person what the facility looked like, the team really helped to paint the picture. So I appreciated their detailed review.
Great, thank you. All right, any final questions? Trustee Stokbrun?
This could be for the consultants or perhaps for President McCabe and Manager Ewald. A question about structure for decision-making. So the police building and the fire station, I know Wilson Drive was a task force. Why was that a task force? Or would you, would you go through a committee? Would we do it as a committee of the whole? For a decision-making structure, where do we start? That to me is one of the first points. And I don't know, you know, maybe the UWM people could weigh in, but I'm not sure how familiar you are with the structure here. I just wonder, how would we make a decision about that?
I think, I think we get to choose. So I think that we can, I guess I'd like to hear input. We can put it on a future item for consideration. And we can, once the report comes back and we look at it, it looks like it would be about a four-month kind of lag time, leeway. So I think we can decide whether we want to put it through. There might be a combination between Public Work Committee and Committee of the Whole. We've done that sometimes with decisions, so I think we can decide.
And I guess my other concern is, so at this point, was there any input from the residents, from UWM perspective?
No, we didn't survey residents. This was strictly looking at the DPW facilities and the decision-making process within the village in the past. We did look at survey of residents in earlier reports. And we noticed that there's a level of information and education that needs to happen with citizens to appropriately and effectively give input for these kinds of decisions. So I would just keep that in mind as the best practice as well.
And so in my view, that might be something we need to consider at the get-go as well as how the staff and the trustees are involved, is how do we get the public educated and involved? So, thank you.
Thank you. Other final comments and questions? If there are none, we can adjourn a few minutes early and give a bio break before we start at 7:30. So is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, motion by Trustee Ursink, seconded by Trustee Moore Baldoff. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? We are now adjourned at 7:26, and we will reconvene as close to 7:30 as possible.
What is going on out here? Oh, that's okay.
It's my family.
Ed, I hear that we got to pull your daughter from baseball.